We're going to take a few minutes to review our meeting agenda during our Legislative Caucus, and then I will call our meeting to order. So we'll begin, I will call the meeting to order immediately following this Legislative Caucus. Mr. Truesdale will call the roll. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Rawls, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Rodriguez. We do not have any communications this evening. We will then open the floor for courtesy of the floor, followed by the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on April 8th, 2025. We will then move to reports of committees. The first report will be delivered by our Community and Economic Development Committee Chair, Councilwoman Daniels, on the work session of April 15th, 2025. The next report I will deliver on behalf of our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Jones, on the work session of April 15th, 2025. And the final committee report this evening will be delivered by our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez, on the work session of April 15th, 2025. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. We will then move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution 18 of 2025, which we will vote upon. Resolution 20 of 2025, which we will suspend the rules for discussion and eventually vote upon. Resolution 21 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 24 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 25 of 2025 will move to the Public Safety Committee. Resolution 26 of 2025 will move to the Public Safety Committee. And the final resolution is Resolution 27 of 2025. It will move to the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, then we will adjourn. So the time is 6:06 PM. I would like to call our legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones? Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present. I would like to note for the meeting record, Councilman Jones is excused this evening. The invocation will be led by Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, President Bowers, and good evening, everyone. I would just like to take a moment of silence for, over the past week, lives that were lost due to gun violence, fires that have happened within our community, and just a moment of silence for residents in our community that are struggling for multiple reasons. I want us to keep them in our prayers and in our thoughts, so let's please take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Rodriguez.
Oh, please, Rawls, for the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. We do not have any communications this evening, so we will move forward with our meeting agenda. We will move to courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Over here.
There we go, for the tall guy. Okay, Brandon Basom, 3000 Block of North Third Street. I know I'm here to complain about things for a lot of reasons, but this time, and I sent you all an email, you probably saw it. I am going to handle my own personal situation, but I noticed they're doing a lot of these, and if the city police are now in the habit of... What happened was, as it turns out, we're getting new license plates. Yesterday, they were issued. We're supposed to get them in five to 10 days. Yesterday, I was pulled over, and my license plates were taken. The citation says because, like, we were deceased, which I'm not, I'm very much alive. However, I was left without a license plate on a vehicle all day today. I have the privilege to take off work, to be able to go handle this sort of thing, to get a lawyer if I have to, to fight this, but a lot of people don't. So I will handle my thing, I'm going to talk to, like, Lamont, I'm going to talk to the officer, we're going to work it out. But I would ask that Lamont, or and the rest of you, maybe, like, look into this. If this is something they've done throughout the city, maybe you dismiss these tickets, because this is the reason law enforcement in the community don't have a good relation, because this predatory, like, like, tricky stuff doesn't make people feel comfortable approaching the police. So I'm not up here to ask that mine be dismissed, I'll work that out. But if 20 of these are given out, maybe we don't make those people who had to get to work, who had to take a taxi, who don't have my level of privilege, maybe they don't have to pay the fine that they're going to get. Because I haven't gotten it yet, I'm not sure how much it is, but I'm not paying it, so... That's all I ask. Uh, we can, like, you can talk about anything afterwards, I don't think it takes more time, but... Yeah, they pulled over at least five people, and I'm like, my neighbors don't need this BS. Like, these are hardworking people, it was midnight, I can't, most people can't call off at midnight for the next day, like... And none of us were deceased, I promise, everyone was alive, who was driving. That's my comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Hold on, I'll get to you.
Um, hello, my name is Toby Soha. Uh, I, I live in the homeless camp in near PennDOT, so I guess that's the Shypoke area, I guess. So my friend, uh, he didn't want me to say his name, but his $2,000 e-bike was stolen around a week ago in front of the, front of the courthouse, um, the downtown courthouse. And from what he has told me, the police has, have not did anything at all. Um, they've spoken with him, and nothing has come from it. Um, I've heard a lot of talk about a, something like a citywide camera system that's supposed to be implemented sometime, I don't know. My, my question to the council is, if the police are not looking at the cameras that are already in the city, why would we either spend the money or the resources to get more cameras? That, who knows if they will even look at those? Um, and that's my comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Go ahead, that's you.
Okay. My name is Attorney Corky Goldstein. And Madam President, and members of council, I appreciate you serving. I served on city council way before all of you were probably born, under Mayor Dauchik. A lot of people don't remember there was a mayor before Steve Reed. And I served as city solicitor. I've lived in the city all my life. I was born at 29, 2617 North Second Street, and I've only gone two and a half blocks in my life. I live at 2900 Parkside Lane in Harrisburg, right along the Italian Lake. The side of my house faces Division Street. And the reason I'm here tonight is, number one, to say to council and the city, you guys have done a great job on Second Street. I was born on Second Street when it was two ways. And they didn't need roundabouts back then, but it was great. But, and what you've done with the roundabouts is great for Second Street. But what has happened is, people have avoided Second Street who don't live there or don't have reason to go, so they go up to Sixth or Seventh Street, come down Division Street, or come down to Sixth or Seventh Division. When they hit Sixth and Division, it's a straightaway, it's a huge street, and it's a racetrack. I am constantly out there, I have a dog, and I'm walking. Kids coming from the Cam Curtain Academy, can't get across, I have to help them, that's fine. I don't want anybody to get killed. And people, now that the weather's nice, are going into the lake, people from the church, people all weekend on Easter are trying to cross the street. You've got to do something about Division Street. If you just came up there and saw how people race, I don't, I have no great against motorcycles, but they come, they know that's the racetrack. And someone is going to get hurt badly, there's always fender brempers, but they're coming so fast that at night, it's not well lit. There's just a few things you'd have to do. All I ask city council is, and all of you, to see if you could get something done. I've been trying to talk to people for years now, and ever since Second Street was done, done great, Division Street is now a racetrack. Just come there, try and cross the street. There's no crosswalks, there's nothing, there's no lights, nothing. So I ask for your help, and I thank you for listening, and I hope that by me coming tonight, some of you, or one of you, might put this together and see if you can get things moving. I heard that there was supposed to be a meeting May 7th. Uh, I've heard nothing about that. So it's just frustrating, not for me, but for these kids who come down, they live on Green Street Apartments, they can't get across the street, and they take their life in their hands. And I don't want anybody to get hurt, so only, and I just think it's the right thing to do. There's a lot of people living along that area, and I thank you for taking the time to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? Yes? Okay.
Good evening, Madam President and Council. My name is Lisa Harden, I live in Uptown area, off of Jefferson and Gary, in that area. Councilman Rodriguez, thank you for cleaning up that, you and Lamont. But I'm here today because I am so sick and tired of the violence from these kids, the gunplay, I'm, I'm like fearful for my life. I called the police two or three times. Lamont told me yesterday, now I got to come down here. And, like, I know these children, that this thing that just hap... I'm sick of it. I don't, I feel like the police are not doing enough, and I know they have a hard job to do. I just feel like maybe they're overworked and underpaid, but I'm saying, my kids is like, stop being a carry on, no! I'm unsafe in my own home, and I should not, I should, as high as the rent is, I shouldn't have to feel like that. And worried about if these kids is coming back now with guns and all that. Something has got to be done. Our mayor said before, maybe we need to bring in SWAT, or we got to... All you see since the fire at the governor's mansion, Pennsylvania State Police here, well, they need to be doing something about these kids and these gangs and all that, too. It's, it's, it's like out of control, the city's out of control, crystal. We was born and raised here. I lo, I loved being, I left here and lived in Florida for 13 years, I came back, this is not our city. And it's sad, and I'm telling y'all, I'm scared for me and my children's life. And nobody should really have to live like that. And I just don't know what to do, who to turn to, what, what should we do? What, what, do y'all have any clue? We don't have a clue. And neither do our mayor.
No, I would love to talk to you after the meeting, I just couldn't speak to you up there, Ms. Lisa. It wasn't that I didn't have a suggestion. Yes, you're welcome.
We do have suggestions, but we can't respond right now. Um, is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left?
Good evening, my name is Melanie Cook, and this must be old home evening for the Riverside community. I live in the 3000 Block of North Third. And while I didn't come to comment on what may be a lack of police response, I do want to say something about that now. Um, there was a situation where there was a dog pit bull, very friendly pit bull, that had gotten loose. Um, a neighbor had corralled the dog. Uh, calls were made to the non-emergency number. Over the course of two and a half hours, there was virtually no response, no one ever came. Because I'm familiar with the dogs, I interjected, checked the collar, traced the dog to an address, drove to the address myself, spoke to someone at the property, and they came and got the dog. Uh, whatever the situation is with the non-emergency police line, the city of Harrisburg may or may not be getting the attention that it deserves from those individuals, because over the course of two and a half hours, according to the neighbor, the recommendation they were given is just let the dog loose. Now, who wants a full-grown pit bull running through the neighborhood, even a friendly one? It would have put the dog in danger, and it would have put other people in danger. So something has to be done about that. With respect to Division Street, those of you who attended the Second Street public meetings that were very well orchestrated years ago, very well attended, know that comments were made, and comments, I can speak to what I said, about it was going to divert traffic from Second Street and send it directly up Sixth Street and directly up Seventh. And it is true, they hit those blocks, come down Division, flying. But it's not just Division Street. They come up Third Street, flying, with virtually no attention to the speed limit. Graham Street, you might as well pull the stop signs, because there are vehicles on a daily basis that come off of Sixth and drive straight up Graham Street. Don't stop at a single stop sign, hit Third, and then go fine. Police being overworked may or may not be a situation, but the citizens of this town deserve more of a response than what we're getting. If there is an emergency, police turn out, and six, seven, eight officers arrive, and that is what they should do in support of each other. But when you call and get no response from things that people apparently don't seem to believe are an emergency, that's problematic. When you live in a city where, or any city, one of the things you say, take care of the small things, and then society will start to eliminate the larger things. I concur. We have young people in this city who are dying in the streets for no reason. And one of the biggest reasons is guns. Why are there so many weapons getting in the hands of young men of color in the city of Harrisburg? That is the first and primary issue that needs to be addressed. This is not complicated. They wouldn't be shooting each other in the streets if they didn't have access to the weapons. There's not one single gun store in the city of Harrisburg, but yet virtually every kid in this city has a weapon or has access to a weapon. There has to be better communication. And the primary reason I came today was, one, because I understood that the Dr. Henry, the superintendent of the schools, was supposed to be giving his quarterly report. That needs to happen on a monthly basis. The city and the school district need to communicate better and coordinate better. And the primary reason I came was to discuss the Parks Initiative. Those of you who took part in 2023, Seventh and Radnor, Gorgas, Reservoir, and Wilson were supposed to be getting major upgrades. There was extensive public comment, and nothing has happened. If we want to know how to keep these kids off the street, give them something to do. Invest these dollars that the city has. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, oh, go ahead.
Ms. Cook, um, Ms. Cook, after the meeting, I would love to speak with you, because we're on the same accord, and I can give you the updates that I have from the administration. I, that is something I would like to speak to you about, because I think that there should be, so, yes. Thank you. If you don't mind, both standing, it's probably about on the same topic. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any additional comment to my left?
That's a hard act to follow. Um, I wanted to let him know, uh, the guy who had the friend whose bike was stolen, you might want to reach out to Dwayne Bender, Public Safety. He, uh, controls the surveillance for the courthouse. Um, all right, let me keep the theme with the police. Good evening, members of city council and fellow citizens of Harrisburg. My name is Robert Williams, I'm a resident of Capitol Heights area of Harrisburg. I stand before you today as a concerned resident of our city. I come with an urgent message about the state of our police department and critical issues that demand our collective attention and action. The data tells a troubling story about our Harrisburg Police Department. While black residents constitute 47% of our city's population, black officers make up only 11% of our police force. This 36 percentage point gap isn't just a statistic, it represents a fundamental disconnect between our police and the community it serves. Despite lowering entries of barrier, I mean barriers of entry, sponsored police academy training and removing residency requirements, our department continues to struggle with recruiting minority officers. This indicates the problem runs deeper than just procedural barriers. It points to a crisis of trust and perception that requires targeted, intentional solutions. More alarming are the documented cases of alleged misconduct by specific officers that have gone insufficiently addressed. I draw your attention to two officers in particular. Officer Mark Howe II has been named as a defendant in at least three federal civil lawsuits alleging excessive force between 2019 and 2025. The most recent, Watkins versus Howe, stems from a 2023 incident where Officer Howe allegedly used chemical spray without sufficient cause, participated in tackling the plaintiff, resulted in a broken tooth, was present when threats were alleged and made during the arrest. Additionally, Officer Howe was captured on video during the St. Patrick's Day weekend pushing an individual near moving traffic. This occurred despite his prior off-duty DUI charge from 2019. Corporal Esteban Restrepo is a co-defendant in Watkins lawsuit where he allegedly dragged the plaintiff by his dreadlocks during the same 2023 arrests. While Corporal Restrepo has received departmental, departmental awards for bravery, the serious nature of these allegations cannot be dismissed. the serious nature of these allegations cannot be dismissed. What's most troubling is not just these incidents themselves, but what they reveal about our department's leadership and accountability systems. When officers with documented patterns of concerning behavior remain active duty without transparent discipline, disciplinary action, it signals a breakdown in oversight and accountability. The persistence of these issues point directly to the failures of leadership. An adequate supervision that fails to correct problematic officer conduct before it escalates. Ineffective early intervention, intervention systems that don't identify patterns of concerning behavior. OPEC disciplinary processes that undermine public confidence, risk management failures that expose our city to significant liability. While the Police Commissioner, Thomas Carter, a black man with deep roots in our city, community and leads the department, his representation at the top has not translated into departmental transformation. The lack of transparency about the racial composition of command staff further obscures the four, the four picture of leadership diversity. This issue creates profound consequences for our city. Eroded public trust, particularly in the black and minority communities, decreased cooperation from citizens who fear rather than trust the police, increased city liability from lawsuits that drain our resources, officer recruitment challenges that perpetuate the cycle of underrepresentation, compromised public safety when residents are reluctant to call. I call on this council to make, to take immediate concrete action, demand complete, complete transparency and officer complaints investigation disciplinary outcomes for Officer Howell, Restrepo and other officers with multiple complaints. I know my time's up. I'm gonna end it.
That was almost done.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment? I don't want to miss anyone. Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Council members, are there any revisions to those meeting minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. The first report you will hear this evening will be shared by our Community and Economic Development Committee Chair, Councilwoman Daniels, on the work session of April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Um, on that date, we, the Community and Economic Development uh Committee reviewed Resolution twenty-one hyphen twenty, twenty-five, um which is a resolution approving a preliminary final lot consolidation. Um, this was a, uh, I'll just read the, the resolution. Consolidation and Land Development Plan to Construct a New City of Harrisburg Parks Maintenance Facility Onsite. The existing nearby facility at nine oh one North Twelfth Street will be demolished as part of a larger project redeveloping SRTA's operations and maintenance facility at nine oh one North Cameron Street, which will include the vacation of public rights of way and consolid- consolidation of lots in the block to the south associated, and associated site and access improvements. Um, and basically this is um one of many resolutions to come to um take into account constructions and improvements related to both um the Har- Harrisburg Parks Maintenance Facility as well as SRTA's operations and maintenance facility. This particular um project, uh, the, the land currently belongs to SRTA and on that land the fac- the parks facility will be built prior to demolishing the existing one which is on this, on city's, on city's land. Um, the, because this is just a small piece of a larger um project, um there are many kind of missing missing elements to the, the complete step of what will ultim- of how we will end up at the final project of a major concern to most council members was the lack of um clarity on liability and indemnity and um and who's responsible for um issues as they present themselves since most MOUs, uh, there, there haven't been any MOUs or there aren't, haven't been formal agreements at this point. Um, so, um, that's basically it and I ask council members to vote uh as they wish on this particular resolution. And that was it for my committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, our agenda outlines the report from the Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Jones, on the work session of April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I will deliver a brief report um in Councilman Jones's absence. On Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Public Safety Committee met to discuss one resolution, Resolution Twenty of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing and approving the submission of a petition to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board for an exemption of a specific downtown area of the city of Harrisburg from the Board's regulations regarding amplified music being heard off the licensed premises in favor of enforcing the city's adopted noise control and abatement ordinance. The resolution was discussed during two work sessions, one held on Tuesday, April first, two thousand and twenty-five, and the second one held on Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Councilman Jones, uh, during both of those work sessions, discussed offering an amendment to revert back to a previous map outlined in Resolution eighty-five of two thousand and seventeen. Council members asked the following questions: impact on businesses and boundaries of the previous map. I encourage my colleagues to support the amended version of Resolution Twenty of two thousand and twenty-five to ensure our business community can continue to thrive. This concludes the report of the Public Safety Committee. The final committee report you will hear this evening will be delivered by our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez, on the work session of April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam President. On Tuesday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Public Works Committee convened to discuss Resolution twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five. The resolution authorizes the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional service agreement with Urban Engineers Inc. for the purpose of providing construction inspection and construction management services on an as-need basis. Representing the administration was City Engineer Joel Siders, who spoke to the qualifications and benefits of engaging urban engineers. Also present was Mr. Brian Bead, representing Urgent Engineers Incorporated. Our engineer highlighted the increasing numbers of infrastructure projects underway across various city corridors. He emphasized the urgent need for additional support, noting the city is currently understaffed and managing a significant volume of LERTA-related projects. He was quoted as saying, "I do not want to slow down", reflecting his commitment to maintaining project momentum. During the RFP process, forty firms requested documentation and the city ultimately received two formal applications. Mr. Bead spoke to the Urban Engineers' extensive experience and strong professional network. He emphasized their long-lasting relationship with the city of Harrisburg, referencing their involvement in the multimodal project since twenty seventeen. Mr. Bead also addressed minority and women-owned business enterprises, MBE, WBE participation, stating that the Urban Engineers partners with two MBE firms, three consulting firms and one WBE firm, JBC Associates. He acknowledged that some agreements require up to twenty percent MBE WBE participation and affirmed that there are no conflicts of interest associated with the engagement. I strongly encourage my colleagues on council to support Resolution twenty-four of twenty twenty-five. And this concludes the business of the Public Works Committee from the work session held on April fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, we do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment or ordinances for final passage, so we will move forward with resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution eighteen of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighteen, twenty twenty-five. A resolution appointing Ms. Cheyenne Johnson to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments or concerns related to Resolution eighteen of two thousand and twenty-five?
Just a brief comment. Um, I look forward to this appointment to see the body uh back in action and, you know, producing some great things for the city as far as environmental stance is concerned. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just have two additional comments. First, I wanted to confirm the receipt of Ms. Johnson's statement of financial interest, uh, which was uh received on April first, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, as you may remember, there's a ten-day grace period needed um for the form to be on file. So we have exceeded that um timeframe, so that allows us the opportunity to vote on the resolution today. Second, I wanted to note that with this appointment, um, this is council's fourth appointment to the Environmental uh Advisory Council. Uh, the mayor has three appointments to make, but with the majority of the um appointments made, the council can resume meeting because there would be a quorum. So I just wanted to note that. Any final questions, comments or concerns? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Rolls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution eighteen, twenty twenty-five passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Twenty of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty, twenty twenty-five. A resolution authorizing and approving the submission of a petition to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board for an exemption of a specific downtown area of the city of Harrisburg from the Board's regulations regarding amplified music being heard off the licensed premises in favor of enforcing the city's adopted noise control and abatement ordinance.
Thank you. Um, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So before us, we have Resolution Twenty of two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, we do have uh an amended version of this resolution. What, Mr. Luft, would you like to share the contents of the amendment, just for everyone's reference?
Sure, so the amendment actually is pretty simple. Um, it went from the original map that was being used in twenty twenty, from twenty twenty-five, back to what it was before that in twenty eighteen. So the actual change of the amendment is the description of the map itself, that as well as the map which is included, the uh that outlines the uh exempted area.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions related to the proposed amendment?
Yes, so on the agenda, the map that I see is the, is the one that ends at Forster. I don't see the other, no.
So the updated map was sent to, uh, sent to the city clerk. So they do have that information, you can send it around, I believe. Yes, that's the right map. Yes, that is correct.
So is, is that the one that was-
That's the update, yes. They, every, you can right, so just for, I guess for the record, um, it appears that everybody's here today with us at council do have the correct map, uh, the updated map.
Um, Mr. Truesdale sending her the map right now.
And Mr. Truesdale is going to send you the map, the updated map, so that you have it.
Thank you, Mr. Truesdale.
The physical map that we have was shared last week um during the work session. That's why we're in receipt and uh you don't have it, Councilwoman Daniels. So I didn't want you to think it was something um sneaky in any way, but no. So, uh, Mr. Truesdale just forwarded the, the new-
Yeah, the reason I'm just asking is because it's not part of the, like, there isn't, can you, can someone spell out what the boundaries are?
One page, right? Yeah, like a one page description, yeah. Yeah, there, go. Beginning at a point being the center of the intersection of Forster and Susquehanna Street, dense westernly along the center line of Forster Street to the center of the intersection of North Front Street, and southerly along the center line of North Front Street to the midpoint of former Cumberland Valley Railroad tracks, and easterly along the center line of the former Cumberland Valley Railroad tracks to the Harrisburg Transportation Center, and northerly along the eastern boundary of the Harrisburg Transportation Center to the center of Market Street, and westernly to the eastern lot boundary of tax parcel oh nine, oh oh two, oh three one, known as Five North Fifth Street, and northerly and westernly following the lot boundary of Five North Fifth Street to the center of North Fifth Street, then northerly along the center line of North Fifth Street to the center of the intersection with Longwood Street, and easterly along the center line of Longwood Street to the center of the intersection with North Seventh Street, and northerly along the center line of North Seventh Street to the center of the intersection of Forster Street, and westerly along the center line of Forster Street to the center of the intersection of James Street, and northerly along the center line of James Street to the center of the intersection of Hurst Street, and easterly along the center line of Hurst Street to the center of the intersection with Capitol Street, then northerly along the center line of Capitol Street to the center of the intersection with west, eastbound for Beck Street, and easterly along the center line of east for Beck Street to the center of the intersection of Fulton Street, and northerly along the center line of Fulton Street to the center of the intersection with Safer Street, and westernly along the center line of Safer Street to the center of the intersection of James Street, and northerly along the center line of James Street to the center line of Calder Street, and westernly along the center line of Calder Street to the center of the intersection with North Sixth Street, and northerly along the center line of North Sixth Street to the center of the intersection with Basin Street, and easterly along the center line of Basin Street to the center of the intersection with North Seventh Street, and northerly along the center line of North Seventh Street to the center line of Clinton Street, and westernly along the center line of Clinton Street to the center of the intersection of North Fifth Street, and southerly along the center line of North Fifth Street to the center of the intersection of Boyd Street, and westerly along the center of Boyd Street to the center of the intersection of North Third Street, and southerly along the center line of North Third Street to the center of the intersection of Calder Street, and westernly along the center line of Calder Street to the center of the intersection of the Susquehanna Street, and southerly along the center line of Susquehanna Street to the center of the intersection of Forster Street, leaving place of it.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments related to the amendment?
Thank you, President Bowers. Um, I think that with all the streets and everything just mentioned, I think if this map was, if those streets were depicted on this map and it was outlined, it would be easier for our residents to follow along, to see where the coverage is. Because basically this just has purple coloring in it and it's kind of hard to follow. So I don't know if there's any way, you know, for residents who are trying to follow this map.
I mean, it's kind of a- They want to, they want to follow it because there are technological restraints, right? For attorneys in the law bureau trying to get this accomplished, but you can either follow it written out, which will tell you exactly the street, where to go on the map. And the map will also, there will also be a grown-up map at the area of the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. So again, this, there will be another opportunity for everyone to come, have, have their questions answered. This is not the last chance.
Okay, that's good. I appreciate, I appreciate that. Because if residents want to know, you know, to see the outline and to see all that information you just read, for people who are visual, it's going to be clear for them to understand it by looking at it. And if no one has a copy of it, or it's not presented, then it's just difficult. But thank you very much.
Yes, and I think that um, kind of piggybacking off of that, right? The boundaries you just read are not the boundaries that were put in the notice uh for today's meeting. So as of right now, unless residents like read the, you know, participated in the entire meeting, like they don't, the boundaries look like the one that was um advertised today.
Right, so at the, I believe it was at the work session, it was Councilman Jones who requested that it be changed specifically to what it is now. So we've made that amendment, and I think we're just kind of ahead of ourselves yet, so there is going to be another opportunity right now, at once everybody's got their question, to have public comment again on the new amended resolution, or there's not sure.
And the boundaries that are articulated in the amended version were reviewed during last week's work session. So this would be the second time that everyone is at least hearing the map if you aren't, if it's not physically in front of you. So I wanted to clarify that. Are there any other additional questions, comments, or concerns related to the proposed amendment? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so... I move to amend Resolution Twenty of 2025 to expand the map as it is resembled in Resolution Eighty-five of 2017.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from council members before we open the floor for public comment?
I'll just note, for the public record, that this isn't an entirely new map. This reverts it back to the map from 2017. So essentially, it's erasing the updates that reduced the footprint that were made in 2019. So this was a map that was in place previously.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns from council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will open the floor for public comment for anyone that would like to share comments on the motion that is on the floor.
Hello, I'm Mark Santana. I live in the two-hundred block of Liberty Street. I've lived downtown for twenty-five years. I'm the president of the Capital Area Neighbors Group, which encompasses the downtown part of the map. We've already used this map before, and as far as I know, it's been successful. We haven't had any problems with it. And what this allows us to do is to police our own neighborhoods with the Harrisburg City Police and the Capitol Police, rather than have the Liquor Control Board in Harrisburg. I think we should be able to take care of our own here as we have in the past. And although this is a public, coming out of the Public Safety Committee, I think it is part of economic development. As downtown is in crisis, Harrisburg is in crisis, we need as much help as we can, as I said at the last meeting. Any business owner that's still holding on with a restaurant or a bar downtown is honorable and commendable. We should be trying to help these people as much as we can. We're able to police them. There's methods that residents, if they need to, can reach out to the Harrisburg Police and make a complaint. They can reach out to the Liquor Control Enforcement and make a complaint. So it's not like we're just letting things run wild. We are actually taking our closer eye here. Instead of getting the Commonwealth involved in Harrisburg, we can just keep Harrisburg policed by Harrisburg. So I would encourage all of you to vote yes on this resolution.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to offer public comment?
Yes, Ed Jarrock, fifteen-twenty-one, Second Street. And I just want to say, I did attend the workshop, workshop session last week. So I've been trying to follow the map. This map does address my concerns, which was to include the midtown area. There's several establishments that have invested big money. You need to make sure they're, you know, covered in this amendment. So I, I know it's been hard to follow all these maps, and I appreciate the council member, I mean, the lawyers department trying to connect all the dots, but I think everyone's on top of it now, and I'm satisfied with the final output here, and I appreciate if you'd all vote in affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, my name is John Traynor from Harrisburg Midtown Art Center. And of course, I would love council to support this amendment, but, uh, resolution, but also, this map actually, that you referred to as 2017, actually was passed in 2014. So from fourteen until nineteen, we had the midtown was included. Why the map changed in 2019, we have no idea. The city solicitor didn't recall why it was changed, but it certainly wasn't changed with city council's knowledge. So I would respectfully request that you include midtown in this new resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment, either to my right in the middle section or to my left? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, we have an amendment before us, so we are going to vote on the amended version of Resolution Twenty of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty of 2025 passes as amended by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-One of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-One of 2025. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final lot consolidation and land development plan to construct a new City of Harrisburg Parks Maintenance Facility on site. The existing nearby facility at nine-oh-one North Twelfth Street will be demolished as part of a larger project redeveloping SRTA's operations and maintenance facility at nine-oh-one North Cameron Street, which will include the vacation of public right-of-way and consolidation of lots in the block to the south and associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Twenty-One of 2025?
Just a concern, Madam President. So although I am for this resolution, Mr. Traynor, since you are here throughout the duration of, since I've been on council, there's been time and time some concerns about HMAC. So if you ever get some time, I'd love to see if Mr. Truesdale could schedule a meeting between you and I just to see if you're stepping up any precautions as far as security and maintenance. There were few, quite a few things that were addressed, and I'd just like to speak with you about it so we can get ahead of it moving forward, if that'd be okay with you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Twenty-One of 2025?
Thank you, President Bowers, just one. I totally agree with our economic development, especially in the downtown and midtown area. I do think that this resolution is important to make sure we are at a place where we're developing that and not hurting it, and Harrisburg right now in that area definitely needs to look at a different vision on how we are expanding the lines, so we do keep businesses within our city and more come in. However, I do have, I did have a few residents who do have some issues with the district and the HMAC, but I feel the same. I think if we can come to some type of conversation about what that looks like moving forward, I definitely support this resolution because I know that the HMAC in the district are staples right now in our community. A lot of us go to them, we attend events there, and I want those to continue to go and thrive even more. So I definitely also would like to entertain a conversation because there are homeowners across the street from both of those establishments, and their quality of life, of course, is important. So, yes, I thank you for being here tonight, and I thank you for indulging in a conversation later on, how we just make everybody be able to have their quality of life while the businesses are still there, because I think that working in tandem is very important. So thank you.
Um, I have a comment.
Okay.
So Resolution Twenty-One is regarding the, the maintenance facility that's going to be built by SRTA, the corner of, what is it, Twelfth and Cameron Street, right there at Cameron, the old cat station, I guess it's called SRTA now. And I think this is a great opportunity for the city of Harrisburg to have a new facility built. I know in the past I've been to that current facility, and that facility has needed some updates for a while. So I think this is a great opportunity for the city to partner with SRTA, make sure we can get an updated transportation facility, as well as getting our park maintenance facility fixed up as well. And so that's Resolution Twenty-One of 2025. That's all I have.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Twenty-One of 2025? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty-One of 2025 passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-four of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-four, 2025. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Urban Engineers Incorporated for the purpose of providing construction, inspection, and construction management services on an as-needed basis.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Twenty-four of 2025?
Uh, just a comment, Madam President. I just want to give kudos to our city engineer. Love the attitude during last week's presentation, and just the go-getter spirit is what we need here in the city. And it's one thing to say, hey, I'm great at this, but it's another thing to say, hey, we need help, and this is how we move forward. So kudos, and I look forward to the many projects we can finish up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty-four of 2025 passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-five of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-five of 2025. A resolution confirming the appointment of Leon Houston Senior to serve on the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Resolution Twenty-five of 2025 will move to the Public Safety Committee. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-six of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-six, 2025. A resolution confirming the appointment of Amici Walker Senior to serve on the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Resolution Twenty-six of 2025 will also move to the Public Safety Committee. Our final resolution this evening is Resolution Twenty-seven of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-seven of 2025. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with BADA Environmental Associates for the purpose of providing environmental and geotechnical consultant services for the whole manor aquatic facility project.
Thank you. Resolution Twenty-seven of 2025 will move to the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, Councilwoman Rose?
Yes, thank you, President Bowers. I wanted to speak about the three playgrounds that I believe are going through updates right now. Seventh and Radner, Gorgas Park, and Wilson Park. A few residents, even Ms. Cook here today, have asked about any updates on those parks or what is happening, so I wanted to give the updates that I do have. I did speak with Director Ross back in March, and one update that I did get from her was that Radner Field, Gorgas Playground, and Reservoir actually was in Wilson Park, Seventh and Radner Field, Gorgas Playground, Reservoir Park will be completed by the end of 2005. Construction, 2025, I'm so sorry, set us back. 2025. We're going to go forward. It went backwards enough. Construction will start in May, and concepts will be put on the website in the next few weeks. However, I do know residents need to hear this from the administration and from the directors. They have asked time and time again. I know that as council, we have invited the administration and directors down to speak to residents about any updates about these parks, because once council votes on it, we're the legislative branch, it goes to the executive branch, which is the mayor administration, and that is where things are executed and done. So there's more information that they can give you that we are not able to. However, they have declined to come down and speak to us, so at this point, I would say that any residents, any further questions you have, so you can get more information about updates on these playgrounds, especially with the playgrounds going to be open and need to be open in the summertime with the program opening up, please contact the mayor administration for more information, contact them directly, and maybe you could give us some updates as well, because we would like to know what's happening with the playgrounds. So I just wanted to give that update on old business with the playgrounds. Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any new business, council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none. The time is seven-oh-three PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.